Good to go, Dana. Just making sure before I call anything. Okay. So if we could call to order this meeting. It's a joint meeting of Kattati City Council and the successor agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency on Tuesday, February 11th, 2020. And if we could please have a roll call. Councilmember Delosso?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Mayor Skilman?
Here.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Lamon?
Here.
Thank you. And then if you could join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. So we'll move to item number four. Approval of minutes and notice of waiving of reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and or adopted under this agenda.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? Okay, hearing none, please show a five oh vote. And we'll move on to announcements. First, we have a meeting orientation for new attendees or viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items where the city council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is a designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to the comments as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statement that the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposely biased. The City of Kattati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. by appointment in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of its Kattati Open for Business Program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Kattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Ronert Park Kattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at 584-9121 or visit sonoma library.org. The Kattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly the second Tuesday of each month from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. and by appointment. For more information, call 707-794-0305. Citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati Community Alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixel.com or by texting your zip code 94931 to 888-777. Measure G supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at kattatcity.org. And last announcement, join us on Friday, February 14th at 9:00 a.m. in Putnam Park for the 23rd Annual Great Backyard Bird Count. Take a short walk through the Laguna de Santa Rosa with John Delosso, somebody we happen to know on the end here, and to identify the many bird species in our area. For more information, contact Ashley Wilson at 665-4222. Now we'll move on to item number six, which is our honorary mayor, and it's Madison Zwing of Technology High School. If you could come on up, thank you. And thank you for being with us here tonight.
Thank you.
And I understand you had prepared just something about yourself. Go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Maddie Zwing. I'm currently a senior at Tech High School, where I've been focusing on my education and my love for theater. This April, we'll be performing West Side Story, our very first ever theater production. I've taken on the role of Grazziella, a dance captain and assistant director. Building and promoting the arts program at a STEM-based school has been difficult but a wonderful experience. Aside from theater, I take interest in reading, writing, art, and travel. After I graduate this May, I'll be going on a 12-day trip to Europe with several other students, including my sister. We'll be going to London, Normandy, Paris, and Amsterdam. After that, I will start at the JC this fall, and I'll transfer after two years to a four-year college where I hope to study theater.
Sorry, you took a breath, so I thought you were going to be launching something else. Sorry about that. So thank you. So what I'll do is I'll go up and down that dais and see if we have any questions for you. So I'll start with Councilmember Lamon.
Well, good evening, Honored Mayor Madison. Nice to meet you. Thank you for being here. I was impressed with everything you put forward, and one question really jumped out at me, I think I'd ask you. So you're clearly very involved in this new production of West Side Story. One thing that jumped out to me is saying you're involved in both directing, but also performing and dancing. I wonder if you could explain a little bit, because I've always wondered how difficult it is to watch, manage, block a scene, help direct, in other words, and also be in it at the same time. How do you split that up?
It's slightly difficult because we rehearse during class time. We don't have very many after-school rehearsals, and so I'm not in all the scenes. So when we're not doing those, I'm either acting as dance captain or directing, along with my teacher, Ms. Walters.
Okay, so for a lot of it, actually, you do have the freedom not to hide and be in two places at once.
Yeah.
That's good, that's helpful. Well, it's very exciting. I really love to see the focus, and thank you for being here to share that.
And then I'll turn to Vice Mayor Moore.
Well, I gotta confess, I was talking to Maddie before the meeting, and Maddie was here four years ago in junior high as an honorary mayor. Even though I think she wanted to let that slide. But I think it's great listening to all the things that you're looking to accomplish. I know Councilmember Delosso is probably gonna have an issue that you're not going to Italy, but we'll forgive that. And keep up the good work. Sounds like you're doing well. Thank you.
Great, I'll turn to Councilmember Delosso, since you were just named.
Thank you so much, and I will not mock you for not going to Italy. It's quite all right. I don't know if we should be chanting four more years, and maybe you'll come back in another four years or something. This could be a good thing. It sounds like you're very, obviously, very involved in theater arts. How about anything from a, I don't know what to call it, but an art perspective, like painting, photography, or do you have any interests in that?
Actually, both of those.
Oh, do you? Okay, so you paint, and what do you paint with? Don't tell me paints, because that's...
Watercolor. I prefer watercolor.
Oh, that's really cool. Watercolor, that's, well, I mean, I can't draw a straight line with a ruler, so painting has always fascinated me, but watercolor is just, it's absolutely spectacular, just the way people set moods with different shades of colors. So I will say, I am a little disappointed, though, in not hearing that you like math. I don't know what happened to math in your life, but math is good. I mean, we all use it, so, especially when we have our administrative officer sitting right over there, so she agrees with me. Anyway, Maddie, it was great to have you here, and we will see you in another couple of weeks, and I'll pass the microphone.
Okay, I'll turn to Councilmember Harvey.
Well, Councilmember Delosso, I believe that she does have to use her math skills to be able to keep everyone on the stage so that they're not, you know, falling off the stage or running into one another. So there is a little bit of calculation in that, I would imagine, so that people aren't running into one another. Your performance of West Side Story, where will that be at? Is that a public event or just within the school?
It'll be at the Ranch of Kattati Tag Building, April 3rd, 4th, and 5th.
That's very good. Plug for that. Boy, you certainly are involved in a lot of things, and certainly seem to have a good direction for your future. Are you, where are you looking to ultimately be? I know you said theater, but is there any particular, you want to be on Broadway? Do you want to be in movies?
I don't know if I would say Broadway. I have looked into movies, and I, what this experience has taught me a lot about directing, and I found that I really enjoy that more often than not. So I think I'd go in that direction, maybe even start my own theater company somewhere local, like here.
Well, we have, we have had one of our former Miss Sonoma Counties have performances here, and she actually does through the Recreation Department our performances. So have fun in your travels. It seems like you, it's nice that you're gonna take a little break in between school and can't wait till you come back.
Okay, and I'm gonna say you're probably one of my favorite honorary mayors because you've hit on, I've got a theater background. I worked in television production for a while. I'm an ultimate stage manager, because like even if there's like a line somewhere, it's like, no, no, stand over there, and strollers go there. I just, I end up directing, it's really obnoxious, I've been told, and I love traveling. So I'm actually gonna be in the UK in May, so I'll get there a little bit ahead of you. But, and that's just, it's wonderful, because I know one of the great things about traveling, too, is that you realize how different things are, but also how much we all have in common. And hopefully, when you're in London or somewhere, you'll be able to catch some performances, because that's, they've got a really active theater group there. So anyway, I had mentioned before the meeting, when you come back to our next meeting, if you could just check in with friends, students, other people that you know around your age, and just say, you know, what could the city be doing a little bit differently? I know we've been talking about trying to get a teen center going, just someplace for the kids to hang out, other than at a coffee shop or something, which we have those, too, which is wonderful. But just any suggestions that you can bring to us, and hopefully it's something we can facilitate, or at least put in our hats for later on and hope to achieve it later. So, and like I said, too, you're welcome to, oh, do you have anybody here with you tonight that you wanted to introduce?
My mom's here.
Hello, Mom. Okay, fantastic. So when you come back, just report back, anything, any suggestions that anybody's made for us. And like I said, you're welcome to either stay or go home, since you may have homework or other projects, things that you need to work on tonight. So thank you again for being here, and we look forward to seeing you again in two weeks.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Good night. Okay, so we will move on to item number seven, approval of final agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, no proposed changes.
Okay, great. So move on to item number eight, which is citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. I'll read a quick informational bit here. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar, or any matter not listed on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any items not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2017-02... I totally hear you. Comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where disability accommodation has been requested. And I have three speaker cards, let's see. Dustin DiMatteo.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman, and to the rest of the council for your time this evening. My name is Dustin DiMatteo, and I'm the founding director of Farmster, which the City of Kattati selected to manage the Veronda Floodi Ranch and develop a demonstration farm. I'm here for Consent Calendar Item C, awarding the Floodi Ranch contractor position. For those that don't know, the demonstration farm has three main parts. The first is community education involvement. The second is regenerative land management and growing healthy food. The third is use of livestock in support of those first two goals. Over the last year, we focused almost exclusively on that third piece, livestock, and we've learned a lot. We've learned that the residents of Kattati love farm animals, and so do I. They're engaging, fun to watch grow up, and when they're managed correctly, they can really help out as an important element towards our overall goal and vision out there. We also learned that the amount of time, energy, and money that we spent last year exclusively on livestock took too much time away from our other focuses, which are equally important elements of our mandate. To that end, we recently published a request for proposals for livestock operators, and learned that there are so many excited vendors out there who want to introduce their heritage animals to Kattati. Those vendors are also prepared to pay their own feed costs, spend their own time caring for the animals, provide the much-needed revenue-sharing support to the ranch, while offering a diverse variety of educational programs to the cities, citizens of Kattati. The livestock that will be on the ranch this year includes adult and newborn Shetland sheep, alpaca, and kunai-kunai pigs, all heritage breeds that have been raised specifically to be friendly and safe around children. Farmster's responsibility is to hire and manage other vendors on the ranch, and in November of last year, we informed the city that our relationship with prior livestock vendor had ended, and our efforts to come to an agreement to purchase or move the animals was met with resistance. I'd like to thank the city for interceding because it's afforded me much-needed time to plan for the future of the ranch. Building on the terrific goodwill we've generated, Farmster's been extremely busy developing momentum throughout Sonoma County and producing outstanding results. Working in concert with the city and other community groups like Rainbow Bridge Montessori School, Board of Supervisors Office, City of Ronert Park Foundation, we've secured more grant funding in the first month of this year than all of 2019, and we're just getting started. Additionally, we've created communications plans to provide a direct line of communication with the Kattati community that will also educate residents on how they can volunteer regularly. And furthermore, we're partnering more closely with the city's rec department and staff to ensure due diligence is prioritized in programming across our mandate. Lastly, we've been very involved in this, with the city regarding the plant construction to the farm, and to be fair, we expected construction to be completed before the end of 2019. Due to that delay, we also have some delays of our key initiatives, but once that construction's complete, we'd very much like to follow up and provide a presentation of our intentions at that point. Thank you for giving me the time, and thank you for your support.
Okay, thank you. I also have a speaker card, Scarlett, and forgive me if I say your last name incorrectly, is it Tasky? Okay, come on up.
Hello. I would like to say that I have been here since the beginning of Dustin and DiMatteo and Nancy Preblech's partnership with the livestock. Although I'm not technically involved in all of this, I am still there when the farming's happening, which is what this is about, right? And I'd like to say that Dustin and Nancy started out with a friendship, for sure. They always spent time together, and Dustin knew Nancy, and Nancy knew Dustin. They both knew full well what they were getting into as far as their partnership is concerned. As they spent time together throughout this last year and a half, farming and working on this livestock operation together, Dustin, I think, felt frustration with Nancy, and yes, Nancy is intense, but Nancy's also a fifth-generation farmer, and she knows what she's doing, and she's fair, and she's considerate of what Dustin's knowledge is and the other people she's working with, and I think she knows who she's dealing with, and I think Dustin did, too. But then, when he got into this, he started working, and the animals, I think, it's too much, it's a lot. I mean, farming's hard, and like, for instance, one time, we were with one of the people that is taking the animals and working together with Dustin and Nancy to raise pigs, and she, we were getting, I think it was 15 or so pigs back after the fires. They'd been brought to her property for shelter, and we were moving them, and Anne had friends earn there, volunteers with her, working, and Nancy, the pigs were getting out and into the field, and Nancy snapped, but that's just what has to happen when there's 15 pigs out, because farming's intense. I mean, they're 100, 200-pound animals, so they require a lot. So the point is, yes, it's intense, but in this particular circumstance, one of the volunteers, he felt like his feelings were hurt, and I was there and I watched it, and yeah, it was intense, but the thing is, farming is, too. So if you want somebody here actually giving farming, then that's what you're gonna get. It's hard, and it's hard work, and you're dealing with 1,000-pound animals. Thank you.
No, thank you for coming here tonight. And then Nancy, I've also got a card from you. Come on up.
You may have a chorus behind you. Yes, I'm the famed Nancy, and I am intense, and I'm a theater director and a theater teacher, and I'm an elementary school teacher, so I can't possibly be that bad. What I want to address is that, is the falsehoods that have been put out there. One, that animals need to be removed because of construction. The contractor is hereby given notice that the city leases the property to Farmster. Farmster operates the property as a working farm and thereby is on-site. The contractor is required to work around and cooperate with Farmster's site operations. The contractor is required to schedule and propose work in cooperation with Farmster's operations and the use of this site. Contractor will acknowledge this. Care shall be exercised to avoid hazards that may cause injury to persons, animals, or property, either during the work hours or after-work hours, which would include dust control, temporary fencing as required. It is the contractor's responsibility to maintain and secure a safe site throughout the contract period 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So this isn't about the construction at the house, because it was in the contractor's bid, and you have a good bid, and someone who has taken that into account, you prepared for that. Is this about this animal's safety and well-being? Well, no. This is about having a partners' meeting and getting held accountable by your peers, and that's not always comfortable. That's not always easy. Truth can be hard. And after, 11 days after a partners' meeting, we received an email saying that there had been a collective decision, I presume with the city manager, because it certainly wasn't among us, to take a step back from operations in December so that Dustin could take time to be with his family this holiday season and focus on his full-time job in San Bruno. 10 days' notice in the middle of November, as you're looking down the barrel of two straight weeks of winter rains coming, is not looking out for the safety and well-being of the animals. Let me remind you what the minimum qualification to receive the licensing agreement for this project was. The successful operator must have a minimum, must have a minimum, of five years' experience managing a farm operation, preferably with an educational component and a financial plan to demonstrate ability to carry that out. I'm at 20 seconds. May I have the mayor's permission to exceed slightly? Thank you. There were also key components. Those key components included having partnerships, partnerships with signed letters of commitment. A list of proposed partners, including written intention to commit from the partner organization. Nobody in their right mind would launch into this project to be at a 10-day notice, or even a 20-day notice, or a 30-day notice, or even a 60-day notice, at the will of somebody who has no experience. And I only, I don't mean that to be mean. I mean that because it was written in the staff report. The strength of granting the contract to Farmster was a wide network of resources demonstrated by letters of support. It was observed that the livestock may be more informally available to the public. This is because the operator, Nancy Preblech, seems to have a desire to create a sense of community by allowing neighbors informal interaction with the livestock. The primary challenge of granting the three-year licensing agreement to Farmster, which is not a nonprofit, which is a project that is fiscally sponsored by a nonprofit, is that the lead operator doesn't have direct experience. And the interns who would be living in the farmhouse on-site would likely also be inexperienced in short term, although the area leads livestock, for example, have experience in these respective fields. I will conclude.
Thank you.
I am a partner in this project, and I have been since day one. You have seen me here. Farming is not for the wilted lilies. It is tough, but that's okay. We're all here to learn, and we all make mistakes, and we all can move on. If it's not broken or bleeding, you walk it off, figure it out. That's what I'm interested in. There's a lot of work to be done, and I think that there's more conversation to be had. Those animals do not need to move for their safety and well-being because of construction. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't have any more speaker cards, but is there anybody else who would like to speak on? Yes, Ms. Aldrin.
I'm first gonna talk on citizens' business, and then I'll continue on consent.
Okay.
I would like to, once again, have ethics charges and demand a public apology from Mark Lammon for his actions on social media from in November and December, where he singled out the few citizens that go, come regularly to the, to these council meetings and attend a whole meeting. He said we were poisonous to the community meetings. He did a whole bunch of things on social media during a civil rights, my civil rights case was in the courts. It still is in the courts. This was inexcusable behavior of a councilman to do, to degrade and defame citizens when, that have been putting their heart and soul and change, trying to change this community for five years, just because we are against what everything is. We, our voices don't matter. Anyways, we already know that because of your unanimous vote record. 2018 and 2019, every vote was unanimous. Why are we all here? Because everything's gonna be the same. And Mark Lammon's a champion for degrading us online, and you all know about it, and you do anything. The city's lawyers knows about it, nobody does anything. They don't, you don't care about what it does to people like me and George Barrett. I was also held responsible for George's speech, and that's wrong. I'm an individual. I am, was repeatedly called, Mark Lammon repeatedly called George my colleague, or both lawsuits, always pairing me to get the anger at George pushed over onto me. That was wrong. You need to really examine your ethics and how you do ethics charges and bring them against Mark Lammon. Okay, I'm gonna go on to consent.
Consent, okay. You got any three minutes?
I didn't know this was a Farmster public hearing. That's what it just seems like.
It's about, it's about the construction.
Yeah, I know.
Go ahead.
The, the, sorry. The engineer's report was for 150,000, and it comes back in estimate, and it comes back in at 440,000. You need to have estimates that are in the ballpark for planning purposes, because Dustin here needs a whole lot of, that need to be, the plan where they had a store and all the things, you're way behind. What is it, two years into the contract with him, and there's only three? He's dedicated thousands of hours. He's dedicated thousands of hours to the farm and not been paid. He won Volunteer of the Year last year ago. We need to invest in this farm. You guys use it for publicity and everything too. So anyway, okay, that's on the farm. Last thing is the CBG. You're replying again, once again, for Richardson Lane, the horse and buggy patched road without considering the main place where there's disabled people, which is Clifford, West School from Clifford to Maple where I am. There's especially a severely handicapped person. Now those CBG monies are supposed to go for people with accessibility and things. There's no accessibility for especially that woman who lives right by Clifford and West School. So I would like for you to save your money because I know of Richardson, get their road fixed to 2026 and concentrate on, because I know it's a lot more money to do from Clifford to Maple for CBG. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. And then anybody else? Yes, go ahead. Yes, you. Yes, come on up. Blue Jacket, sorry. I don't know your name, otherwise I would make it easier.
And I talked last week too, but I've been, my husband and I have been volunteering for about maybe five weeks or so at the farm with Nancy and we've learned so much from Nancy and we've had a really good experience helping out with the animals. And her amount of knowledge that she has is just amazing and we've had a really good experience. And I am still concerned about, the council has said that animals all need to be relocated by February 16th or something. It just doesn't, it's not reasonable. When you have animals, that many animals, you have pregnant animals, you have all different kinds of animals, it's very complicated to think about trying to move them and locate them and where are they going to go and is it appropriate for them to go and if they're pregnant and just different things like that, that I still am concerned about that amount of time for somebody to try to.
Okay, thank you for your comments. And I saw another hand in the back. Do you want to bend the microphone? Oh, you're good, okay. Oh, okay, no, that's fair.
I'm speaking for Madeline. I am Sherri, the preschool right across the street. And I know that I've already sent emails to a couple of the board members about, you know, concerns for the farm, of course. And a lot of questions and things have, or a lot of things have been kind of cleared up, or I can't say cleared up, but some of the questions that I know a lot of our citizens had were talked about today. And so Madeline wanted to share a little letter that she had and it says, hello, my name is Madeline and I'm seven years old and I have created a relationship with each and every animal on the farm and I always ask, can we go to the farm? Because my dog Lucy loves all the animals and I love the farm and my mom and I love all the animals and they love us. It would be such a shame for them to go. I helped Miss Nancy and I learned so much from her. I love her animals and I've thanked her so much. Okay. And again, I love the animals so much. Thank you. I just wanted to say that I know that the school and the community are trying to work things out with having a partnership and that things are unknown right now, but I'd wanted to express how I feel that the farm and the animals and everything that it can offer is a benefit to not only the community but to the schools because I have a lot of students that go over there. I have actually a couple, well, one main student who is very verbally low and he's actually been talking more as he's gone over to the farm. His mom does therapy on the outskirts of it because we're not allowed in, but they do a lot of stuff over there with his therapist. And it is important for me to know that, you know, that there is going to still be something that we can have over there. Because I feel also too, as a person who grew up on acreage, I had family who were dairy owners, that we're losing that in our society. We're losing, you know, kids don't understand where your food comes from. And so I just wanted to put it out there. Madeline and I wanted to put it out there and I just wanted to thank you all for your time.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments and your photos. Thank you, Madeline. And then I saw, yes, hand over here.
Hello, my name is Linda Richardson. My husband and I purchased our home in Katati 33 years ago. And the place that we chose to purchase our home really was important to us because there is like a wetlands creek area behind us. So we have some space. And I have been working for probably about the last six or seven years on an issue with some trees back there. They're now, I would say about 70 to 80 feet tall. I've been working with the maintenance division and about three years ago, they did come out and put a spot on the tree, painted a white spot that the tree was slated to be removed because this tree is about 10 feet from our fence, but it is all the way over in our yard. We have an in-ground swimming pool and it did damage our pool pump. My husband has had to cut roots off before. I submitted a letter to the city council in September of 19 and I have to say I'm really disappointed at this time and that's what brought me to the meeting today. I have not received any kind of a response. Katati's a beautiful little town. That's why we've remained here. We're not a huge city, so I would think as a homeowner living in this city, you should get some sort of a response, whether it's an email or a letter or whatever. I am really concerned about this tree. We have had branches break off. It overhangs our yard. We have a swimming pool. We have people that visit, swim. We barbecue and I'm really fearful that something might happen with this tree besides just the destruction that the roots are doing to our yard. Many trees in this area were planted by what we were told were the Katati critters and that program has since dissolved. So all of these trees have been planted and they've never been maintained. And the particular tree I'm talking about is cypress trees and there are six of them in a row and they all are about 70 to 80 feet tall. So I did bring copies of the letter that I submitted in September and I also provided pictures with my original letter. So I did bring some copies if I need to give those to anybody. I'm happy to today, but I would appreciate your attention to this.
Okay, thank you. And if you wanted to pass it over to the city clerk, that'd be great. Thank you. And then was there anybody else who wanted to speak on public comment, consent calendar? Oh, yes, come on up. I thought I'd seen another hand. Hi, welcome.
Hello. Hi, my name is Derek Felsman and I'm here to talk on behalf of my opinions on the ranch. I guess my first comment is I am genuinely at a shock at the price of the bids that came in compared to the engineer's quote. I'm curious how $300,000 of difference can come in. But besides that, I am curious about the change in vendors regarding the, or the proposed change in vendors regarding the animals at the ranch. It seems to me like when the first proposal came in, we knew exactly the type of vendor that we were getting regarding the animals and how they were treated and the history therein. I understand that Farmster has put out a request for proposals regarding that, but you know, at this point, it is a mystery on who these vendors are or you know, the variety of animals that they're trying to do or their history. So I don't, I don't know where that information is regarding that change. And it seems not in line with, for the public on what, you know, what these changes entail, how that affects things, and it doesn't make sense to go forward until we know what we're getting. That is my opinion and I feel like, you know, shouldn't probably evict the animals until we know what the proper replacement is, timelines and all of that stuff.
Okay. Thank you very much for your comments. And is there anybody else? Yes, come on.
My name is Rich. I'm here in support of the ranch and the animals. The past, the present and the future of the farm has always included animals. So right now, what you're considering is the present and the current sweat equity. Every day of the farm is Nancy. It's not Farmster's. And going forward, you have to look at what a future farm animal operator is going to want to do with Farmsters. Are they going to want to work with someone that doesn't want to work with them and put in the time and effort that Nancy has put in? Because it's a small community, we all know each other to some extent and know what has happened and what may happen. It doesn't look well for the city if you keep it going the way it is with the current tenor and the value of the farm going forward. Right now, the current contract seems unfair. I don't see where the citizen oversight is. I don't see how easy it is to find the contract on the city website and it should be all in the public, all available for everyone to see. The other aspect of the construction, with construction, there's always mitigation of something or other. That can be mitigated. The animals can be removed. Being honorable and respecting the gestation period of the animals and the different ebb and flow of that is an important thing to the animals, not just us, the people and the construction people who can adjust their schedules. So every day, you know, we have to look at what's happening and looking forward, we have to see how we can make it work better. Right now, it's not working and if we keep it the way it is and just let Farmsters be 100% in control of the value of the contract, it's not going to work for the farm operator. There should be some adjustments. There should be some honor and value of how Nancy's put in her time and effort versus what's happened the other way. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. And is there anybody else who wants to speak on public comment or citizens' business? Sorry, consent calendar and public comment. All right, seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to the council. And see, Mayor, if you wanted to address any of the issues that were raised.
Sure, I'll just, I will add that with regard to the construction estimates, that estimate that was in, I think what they're referring to is there was a notice, original notice that went out and that I think was based on an architectural review that was a couple of years ago. But I want to make sure everyone's clear that the, that when we had budget discussions a year ago about this project, it was clear that it could be up to $600,000 and that's what was budgeted for the project. And so thankfully, instead of $600,000, it came in at under, under that, like 417 or so. So it actually came in significantly under the estimate. That, the number that was printed in that notice was, I think, just erroneously picked up by the consultant that did that notice piece. So that's, that's that. And then I think a lot has been said about the farm, but just as a way of background, the city purchased the farm with the open space district back in 2008. And it was purchased by the city and by the city council at that time because it was a high priority and still is to preserve it forever for the community as a demonstration farm. And that the vision that has come out, I mean, it's been a long-held community vision, but even when we got into the workshops and we got into the RFP for the operators and we got into the discussions about the various proposals that we got, it was very clear that the community vision is a demonstration farm with animals, agriculture and farm-based education. So when we went through the RFP process, Farmster ultimately was the entity selected. So Farmster, Dustin is the sole operator of that. And he also, as part of the RFP process, the public and the council considered work plans. And Farmster was selected, the work plan is what he's been carrying out for the last couple of years. And then I will also add that, you know, everyone, everyone loves the animals. In fact, it's a, it's a key required component to, you know, for the license for them to have animals as part of their operations. And I was reminded the other day by my, my two little daughters who love the farm and they love seeing animals there. And so, you know, none of this is really about animals. Really, you know, what this is about, the fundamental issue here is that the city has a license with the operator and that operator brings vendors on for various things. And in this case, one of the vendors owns the livestock there and that business relationship ended last year. It didn't work out as can happen from time to time. And because, because that business relationship no longer exists, those animals owned by that vendor needed to leave the property. So, so last year, we worked, I worked with both parties to try to set a, you know, a realistic timeframe to have the animals relocated. And we set a date of February 16th, which gave an additional two months for the, for the animal relocation. And that's kind of where we are right now. And as Dustin said earlier, it is definitely important that the animals continue to be part of, part of the operations and Dustin is pursuing an RFP and he will have animals there as soon as they're safe to bring in. And I will just say that it's, I mean, this is never about the animals. It's really just about a private relationship between our licensee and one of his vendors. And he has the full right to change vendors as he sees fit. We just need to, the city's perspective, the city's view on it is that we just need to make sure that they fulfill the terms, in terms of the agriculture, the education and then the animals. How they provide that is not really our direct purview. That'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. And then I understand too, there was the issue of the tree, so we can have somebody look at that and address that as well?
Yeah, so thank you for leaving that information. We'll follow up. I'll follow up tomorrow. If you left your phone number.
Okay, perfect, thank you. And then anything else from council or just, yes?
Yeah, thank you for following up my tree. I was going to mention that. My apologies, Ms. Richardson. I believe you when you say you sent me an email. I must have missed it. I generally don't, so I will take a look at that and I agree with you. I would ask the city manager, yes?
No, I didn't send you an email.
Oh, I thought you said you sent us all an email.
No, 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 a letter.
Oh, I feel a little bit better then. That's good, okay.
A letter that's given to council on September 13th.
All right, well, I will make sure this time this one doesn't escape my view. So thank you and apologies for that. And just a quick comment, I, you know, I have to agree for everybody here, I think one thing that everybody agrees on, it is a shame that this has come to the situation that it is. But I also agree with the city perception, this is something that is outside our control and it's unfortunate that it's been brought into this. Instead of working to try and make something that come together, time has been spent essentially in unproductive methods, I think. But what is clear to me is there's an interest in the local community that lives here in Katati and who really values this like everybody does. Something that's been much more successful than we could have ever figured. What does this look like going forward? How can we hear about that? How can we borrow that? And I heard a mention of perhaps having a discussion after construction and I do think it would be great to have this and make sure we have an open public forum for that at that time. So I'd like to ask for that. I think that would be helpful for everybody here as we go forward to see what the next stage of hopefully even more success for Farmster looks like. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Harvey.
I would just, excuse me, I'd just like to add to that, that we make sure that we highly publicize when that work plan, when we brought forth so that the public has an opportunity to view that work plan and to have. work plan and to have input into that.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else or, no? Okay. Great. So I'll bring it back to council. We'll move on to item nine, consent calendar. And it's items A, B, and C.
I'll move to approve items A, B, and C.
And I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Any abstention? Okay. Please show if I will vote. And we'll move on to item number 10, direction on future agenda items. Did anybody have anything they wanted to pass on today?
Not tonight.
No? Just for more?
Um, no. Thank you.
Okay. Nothing else to say? Okay. Go on to item number 11, public hearings. Item A is ordinance amending sections within Title 13 Water Sewer and Electrical of the City Municipal Code to comply with SB 998. And I'm like turning to Angela? Okay. Oh, sure.
See me, Mayor, and council members. Just one minute for everyone in chambers. So at the last council meeting, January 28th, in my absence, you guys adopted the great discontinuation of residential water services policy, which we needed in order to meet the standards of SB 998. So now we're bringing it back to council, our update for our municipal code. So it is also in line with this new updates for SB 998, as well as doing some minor formatting, some minor updates for modernization for the sewer lateral lines, as well as removing the toilet retrofit additional grants or, you know, that were included within there because those are no longer flexible. So I have to apologize while extracting the code from our municipal, our website for the code. It's in this great column format, which the rest of our code is not in, and so editing it became a great task. So we are going to continue to format this so that it is consistent with the rest of our code, so it won't be in this column format. It'll be easier to identify the different changes while we're going throughout. Again, you'll just see throughout, there's just several just minor formatting items as well as references, removing dates for shut offs, dates for notifications, dates for starting services, how to start services, whether it's in person here at City Hall, now expanding that to over the phone, and hopefully available on our website. So that is a majority of the code updates, which I don't want to bore you with because I know you had the session last time going over the policy. But there's also a modernization for clarification on sewer laterals. So while we were visiting the code, we also wanted to make sure we were addressing any other small items that could make us more, better aligned with the other cities in our area in Sonoma County. And in meeting with REMIF, we found that this was really a little, small area where we can actually clearly define where the sewer lateral transitions from the customer's responsibility and the city's responsibility, and that was something that was missing in our code. So that was an update. And then again, I mentioned the removal of the, excuse me, the toilet rebate program is really what it was. We still have the toilet retrofit section, which was brought up to me, which was on packet page 213. You'll see the retrofit, but that's a little bit different in the fact that you have to retrofit, when you retrofit a bathroom and bring it up to code, you're going to have to replace it with a low-flow tile. So that's the extent on my, if you have any questions.
Okay. So anybody have questions? Yes, come on.
Yeah. Just as a follow-up from our last meeting, for those maybe that didn't hear it out in the audience. So this was a state bill that was passed that essentially was easing, and there'd be no, the water shut off, let me get to that. The water shut off would not be like it has been in the past. In other words, providing people more of an opportunity and having payment plans and things like that. And that was part of the crux of this, correct?
Correct. It's, it's consistency. So no matter where you are with the water utility district, you cannot shut off water within 60 days of receiving a bill or a bill becoming delinquent was the main thing. And also, it set up parameters for not shutting off utility services, specifically water services, for those that meet certain criteria, if they need additional assistance.
Right. And I know I had grave concerns over people taking advantage of the system, because that's just how I interpreted it last time. But it was made clear to me by staff that that wasn't the case. So, but just so people know, this was, it's a, it's a state law that we have to implement. It's not like we had an option here.
All right.
Thanks.
Yes, question? Oh, are you trying to get my attention? Okay.
I was trying to get your attention.
I gotcha. Okay. I thought, I thought you were, I thought you were trying to get my attention. Gotcha. Councilwoman Harvey? Yes?
I'd like to thank Angela. I had a few questions on various sections of this, and I appreciate her taking the time to go over those with me today.
Very good. Councilwoman Lammon, anything else? Okay. So I will open this up for public comment. If anybody wants to comment on our new ordinance regarding water sewer and electrical, it's very exciting. I'll open public comment. All right. Seeing no one, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council.
If there's no discussion, I'll go ahead and make a motion. Move to introduce an ordinance amending Title 13 Water Sewer and Electrical of the Kattati Municipal Code as shown in Exhibit A, which will be reformatted. Thank you. Just wanted to add that. Regarding SB 998, discontinuation of residential water service for urban and community water systems, and also modernizing several other provisions.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Please show us if I will vote in favor. We're bringing the sexy back. Okay. Item number 12, regular agenda. First item is A, resolution approving the expansion of measures available under the Sonoma County Energy Independence Program, SCEIP. Am I turning to city manager? Oh, there we go. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm, I'm getting there because of the formatting of the prior item. I'm having trouble finding this one.
Go about two inches.
All right. So, just joking. All right. So this is the resolution approving the expansion of measures available under the Sonoma County Energy Independence Program. So as you, as you all know, January 14th of this year, the council received a presentation from members of the county that talked about the, the expanded program through some new state law. And the program as it has existed since 2009 offers what's called property-assessed clean energy financing. So basically, you can buy solar panels or water conservation, energy conservation-type improvements to your home, and then they get put on your property tax roll. The benefit of, the benefit of that is that it's not, it's not debt that's with you personally, so it's basically debt attached to the property. So as you sell, if you sell your property, then whoever buys it then sort of inherits the payments for the remainder of the term. In some cases, people find that to be an advantage. Like I had mentioned previously, the, the improvements eligible under this program were energy generation, like solar, energy efficiency, water conservation-type improvements. And then because of some changes in state law, a couple new areas were added that would be eligible for PACE financing, one of which is wildfire safety. So these are installation of wildfire safety improvements that are permanently affixed to residential, commercial, industrial, agricultural, other property. And then the legislature, state legislature, also adopted a seismic safety program that could be attached to property through the PACE mechanism. And seismic, as you could imagine, would finance the installation of seismic strengthening improvements that are for, for residential, construction, industrial, agricultural, other real property to make them more resistant to seismic activity, ground motion, soil failure, and soil failure due to, to earthquakes. So currently, the city, back in 2009, when the original PACE program developed, the city, as well as I think most of the cities in the county, if not all the cities, had entered into an MOU with the county, which allows them to offer those programs to residents in Kattati. And the proposed, the proposal tonight is to amend that MOU to add wildfire and seismic safety improvements as eligible components for PACE financing. So this is a totally voluntary, completely voluntary program, but that's all it would do is just allow residents to opt into the program if they thought that that was valuable for them. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions for staff? Yes, Councilwoman Harvey?
What I didn't see in here, and I probably just missed it, is what is, because there's quite a variety of different thing, options that you have through this. Is there a set time period for repayment based upon what it is that you're doing, or is it always the same timeframe? I didn't catch that.
My, so my experience is that things that are permanently affixed to the property are typically mortgage timescales, like 30 years.
Okay.
I think there's some cases where if they, if they wanted to change light bulbs or something as part of a larger project, maybe that might be broken out in this, in a more, you know, a life cycle more appropriate for that type of improvement. But in general, the things that are permanently affixed to the property are typically like a mortgage 30-year timescale.
So what, you're adding this on to your home for 30 years, no matter, no matter what it is?
I, I think in, so I honestly, I don't know when you're talking about, like, you know, when you're talking like, you know, sink aerators, if they do that as part of improvement, if that's just bundled into the overall larger thing. I don't think they would do improvements for something so small, it would have to be something bigger.
Okay.
But, but generally speaking, the improvements are affixed to the property. They're long-term improvements that don't have a short life, and so they tend to be financed to the 30-year.
Yeah. Because some of these things would not necessarily have a life of 30 years, so it wouldn't make sense necessarily to have them, you'd be paying for something that, you know, has outlived its usefulness.
Yeah. I, I will say, you know, so on the back end, what the county does is the county essentially sets aside a pool of money that's used as a liquid pool for financing the improvements. And then af, and then they replenish it. So they, when they reach a certain level of money out of the pool, then they bond for those improvements, and then they replenish the money, right? So in order to sell bonds, the improvements that are bundled in that bond have to be in the right timescale. So in other words, like a private entity is not going to buy a bond for something that only has a five-year life, if it's a 30-year bond. So I think they're very aware of that, and I think they bundle it appropriately.
Thank you. Any other questions for, from council? Okay. So we'll open it up to public comment. If anybody would like to comment on the expansion measures available under SCEIP program. Open up public comment? Seeing nobody, I will officially close public comment. Got all the exciting ones tonight. Okay. And I'll bring it back to council.
I will lean forward again, and if there's no further discussion, I move to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the existing cooperative agreement with the county of Sonoma to expand the SCEIP program in Kattati to include wildfire and seismic improvements.
And I recognize this is controversial, but I'll still second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Okay. Please show this if I will vote in favor of the resolution. And I'll move on to item B, nominations for regional commissioners and committees, and I am ready to be provided direction.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll just, this is a really quick one. At the upcoming meeting of the Sonoma County Mayors and Council Members Association Board of Directors and City Selection Committee meeting, there's two appointments that, that need to be considered. One is the Child Care Planning Council of Sonoma County. We've only received one letter of interest, which is the Vice Mayor of Santa Rosa City Council, Victoria Fleming. And then the city, under the city selection committee appointments, there's the Remote Access Network Board. One position to be filled, and coming late under the wire was one person that put their name in. This is the mayor of Santa Rosa, Tom Schwendhelm. Schwendhelm? I think I pronounced that correctly?
Yes.
Schwendhelm. Yeah. So for, there's two positions and one candidate for each one, so I think it's probably fairly straightforward.
Okay. Now try to keep your comments to two minutes. Okay. No, just.
Another controversial one?
Yes. Another controversial one. Well, do you, does anybody want to comment before I open up public comment?
Well, first of all, first of all, I would say, don't say that, because we did have one last year where there was one person for a seat, and it was quite controversial.
That's true.
So it do happen.
There is precedent.
It's been very long time.
Yes. Okay. Any discussion other than please pick the people who have thrown their names into the ring?
I'd happy, be happy to support direction for both of these people. I know both of them, work with them to some small degree. I believe that they're willing to step forward and help, and I think it's a good thing.
I would concur.
I see no reason not to accept these applications.
Okay.
Unless we hear something from public comment.
There you go. Okay. So that is an excellent segue. I will open it up to public comment. If anybody would like to comment on the two names who've been submitted for the two positions. All right. Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it, well, no, I've already got my direction. I was going to say I bring it back to the council, but there's no really vote.
Do you have your direction?
I have my direction. It will be very difficult, but I think I will remember. Okay. Now we'll move on to item 13, city manager's report. Mr. Obid, back to you.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So just a couple things. We have replacement electric vehicle charging stations out there by the civic center, so if you haven't seen them, you should go check them out. They are the, the newer version. The old, the older version was no longer supported. Parts are no longer available for them, so we replaced them with newer versions, so it's all good. And then wayfind, the wayfinding project that we've been talking about for a while, it's out to bid, and that's on our website. It went out to bid last Friday, and bid's open March 3rd. So you should see at least the first phase of construction on this by June 30th, so you'll see it in early, in the late spring, early summer. And then I expect, I expect that we'll be talking about what the second, and hopefully final phase will be when we're in budget discussions later this spring. On February 7th, the Kattati Police Department conducted special traffic operations at the intersection of East Kattati and La Salle. That's where they started.
Yeah.
Yes. And we had officers in vehicles, on foot, in uniform and plainclothes. And they, over a couple hours, they issued 11 traffic citations there. That varied from failure to yield to pedestrians using their cell phone while driving and failure to stop, which I think we've all seen at that intersection. And they are going to be continuing to do it throughout this month at different intersections. So the, the roadshow will continue there. And also, on Saturday, February 1st, our recreation manager, Ashley Wilson, was, she says installed as, I think, I think it was crowned, she was crowned as the California Parks and Recreation Society District One President for 2020-2021 board year. And the California Parks and Recreation Society, the acronym is CPRS. They're the ones that gave us the award for our activity guide. Yeah. Same organization. They're a nonprofit professional and public interest organization with approximately 4,000 members, with the mission to advance park and recreation profession through education, networking, resources, and advocacy. I think she wanted me to give a plug for CPRS. I'm not sure. But anyway, the district that she is president of is, includes the counties of Del Norte, Humboldt, Lake, Marin, Mendocino, Napa, Solano, Sonoma, and Trinity. So being a small city, the resources and connections made available through CPRS have been invaluable to the development and growth of our recreation department, and I can certainly attest to that. It's definitely like a, a resource multiplier to have all those people that can help you with questions or situations that maybe haven't, haven't come up here before but have come up in other places. On Saturday, February 22nd, so I'm switching topics on you, sorry. On Saturday, February 22nd, so I'm switching topics on you, sorry. On Saturday, February 22nd, we will host our third annual Sweethearts Fairy Tale Dance in the Khatati Room. The dance will be from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. and is a family dance for children and guardians to dress up and spend the night dancing, taking photos, playing games, and making their own fairy tale crafts and enjoying refreshments. So for more information on this or any of the city recreation programs, please contact Ashley at 665-4222 or awilson@khatatcity.org. And like always, all this information is also available on the city website and social media, Facebook, Instagram accounts. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, any questions about the city manager's report? Yes?
I'm on a roll tonight. The wayfinding RFP that's out there, I can't remember, but I think there was a discussion, is this going to be done in segments, like in geographical segments? So this will be complete, this area of the city, wherever this is, complete every component? Or is it going to be phased in more on a component, like the larger signs, they'll get all done and then go down to the next level? I can't remember what the process was going to be, if there was one.
Yeah, so the discussion has, the discussion at least internally has been that when we put this first phase out, that it, that it's a, it's a comprehensive program to get you from point A to point B, whatever signage that requires. So that, you know, it's within the budget, the budgeted amount.
Right.
So that, but it means that there will be some areas that don't have sign, you know, signs to them yet because there's not budget in this first phase. But it is important that we, that we complete the signs, all the signs that are required for installation to find, to get to certain destinations. So it's kind of a mix of location and type. But the point is, is that you're not going to see a sign saying, go here to this park, and then there's no more signs because we ran out of budget money, right? The idea is that you have a complete sign program to get you to your point.
Right. So completing a segment, if you will, will be the priority.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. No, that's great. Thank you.
Any other questions for city manager? Okay. And we'll move on to city council member reports, and I will start to my right. Councilmember Delasso.
Again?
You're so warmed up. You're warmed up.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Actually, I have not had any subcommittee meetings since our last council meeting. So with that, I have nothing to report out.
Okay. Councilmember Harvey?
Okay, well, I attended the Water Advisory Committee meeting on February 3rd, and I'm pleased to report back that I was, made the chair again for two years. So that was very exciting. And we discussed, one of the things is the water supply. And there's great news because with them working with the Corps of Engineers and looking at the weather and things like that, they've been able to hold back a lot of water in Lake Mendocino because we've been a little bit dry. So it's max is 80,000, and we've been able to have it at 79.5. So that's really good news because as we've seen in the weather reports, February's been a little bit of a dry month. So it's working really well managing the water supply with Army Corps and the flood control. So that seems to be working. It's a great program, and so hopefully we'll be able to ultimately have that used all across the United States because we're kind of the guinea pig with that. So that was good news. Other good news, just got email today, the water agency has been working very hard to get federal funding for more work on the Dry Creek. Miles four, five, and six, they've been working with Army Corps of Engineers. They have stepped up to complete those miles, and in their year 2020 work plan, they were able to secure $28 million for work on that. So that's really important, and a lot of people worked really hard back with the folks in DC to get that done. But that's a really good amount of money, and it really shows. When we, they had the dedication last year for the other miles. It was very interesting to hear the folks from the Army Corps talk about the relationship that they had in, in working with Sonoma County, and they're very impressed with the relationship, and so they're very supportive. So this kind of highlights that strength by actually putting funding to help towards that. So that was great news. That's all on that. And then I just want to remind folks that the North Bay Division meeting is Thursday, March 19th. This quarterly meeting will be in Susun City, and the presenter will be from the Calpers' Board Division. Member Lisa Middleton will come in and talk to us about Calpers. So that ought to be very interesting. And the event will be, it's a lunch because that's when apparently the presenter could be there. So that's all I have to report.
Okay, great. Thank you. Vice Mayor Moore?
I just want to piggyback on a comment regarding Lisa Middleton. She has been in the workers' comp industry for over 30 years and was executive board member with State Compensation Insurance Fund prior to retiring and stepping onto the Calpers Board. So I know her, and I'm sure it'll be an interesting presentation on it. We attended the Khatati City Council meeting tonight, and Damian and Noah gave a little presentation on some of the things that are happening in the city coming up.
Chamber of Commerce meeting?
Chamber of Commerce.
Okay.
Is that what I said? They're both on the same day. Chamber of Commerce meeting. And so that was an update to them on some of the things that we're doing down the road. And they, we are reminding people that their annual awards dinner is on the 28th here at the community room, and they would love all of us to show up. Little plug there. And then I have some other mixers and ribbon cuttings coming up March 4th at Sweet Expectations, 5:30 to 7:00 is a mixer. And March 18th at Acme Burger is a mixer from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. I also attended the REMF Annual Training and Board Meeting on January 30th and 31st. Damian, the city manager, was there for the training session. I was there at the board meeting as well. And the minutes are not done on that yet. I will have those probably next week, and we'll present the pertinent information from that meeting at the next council meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you. Councilmember Lamb?
Well, I do have some news to share, which has some importance to all of us who pay our bills for energy in the region. And usually for the last six years, I've been in a position whenever I have something to share from Sonoma Clean Power, at least from my perspective, and most of the public, it's usually good news. Tonight, actually, I have some bad news, both for Sonoma Clean Power and all the community choice aggregations like it in the PG&E region. And that's basically prices are going up. People aren't shocked to hear that when it comes to their electric bill. That seems to be business as usual. But this is again, this thing we've talked about before, which is called the PCIA, which stands for Public Charge Indifference Adjustment. And it's a good concept. The idea behind this is that when CCAs started to come online seven, eight years ago, there were existing contracts that PG had taken. As they lost the customers they had bought power for, it seemed only fair to legislatures that the customers, the CCAs, pay for that incurred indebtedness. So pretty good concept. I think everyone agrees with that. The historic problem with it has been, it's rather vague and has a lot of variability to it. Nobody has a good sense or can see what the numbers really are in terms of what the indebtedness should be. What happens every year, literally with very short notice, is a new number is dropped, and everybody has to scramble to pay it. And it seems to have some degree of variability. And that's the problem because there's that limited view into the numbers, and it's perceived that it can be used as more of a competitive tool at times. But regardless of that is the case or not, the truth is that we're going to see increases every year for the next few years of at minimum $27 million just for transmission costs. Could go as high as 45 million. What this means is the historic advantage we've had of always consistently being cheaper than PG&E has for us and just about every other CCA that I'm aware of, that's going to get a lot closer. I predict we will at minimum for the next few years probably be at parity, and I would not be surprised to perhaps dip a few percentage points even below it time to time. The good news is after a few years, when Diablo Canyon has fully retired, I think that's the biggest driver right now of extra cost for all of us, this should improve. And I think ultimately, there's a lot of interest in looking at this, whether through adjudication or some legislative measure to actually get a hard number of what this cost is and allow people to deal with this in a more constructive manner. And also with all the variability that we see going on right now with PG&E, who knows what may happen in the next year or two. But for now, that appears to be the case. So it will be the typical yearly increase of electricity, and we're going to get hit with a little more than we normally do. So sorry to share that, but it is what it is.
Okay, thank you for the report. I just have two quick ones. I attended the fundraiser for the Sonoma County Homemakers, which is a great organization for advocacy. They were talking as well about how with the power outages, how so many of us had to throw away a lot of our food. And so their program helped a lot of families out to replace the food that they had lost when we had the power outages. So I was very happy to continue making tons of tamales, which is always fun. And then just tonight, earlier, literally minutes before I came in the door here, I got to attend Sonoma, can't even speak, Thomas Page Academy's STEAM program. So it's basically their STEM program plus the A in the middle of that. And so I got to sit at the library and read to a large group of kids, and that was a lot of fun. And then the next speaker after me was one of our local sergeants. So it was a lot of fun seeing everybody involved, and the kids were very excited to get to, I think they were more excited to see the police. I really have to contend that. That's absolutely true. But anyway, it was a lot of fun, so I was glad to be able to participate in that event with them tonight. And with that, we'll move on to item 15, public comment on non-action agenda items. Yes, Mr. Robinson?
I wanted to do on future agenda items. One is, I like to see expiration dates on the committee members, like planning commissioners. In the past, there was, but there's now no expiration date to their, so they don't have to reapply. It's like Supreme Court justices right now. They can, they're, so that's one. I like to see also the, since we're getting the homeless house on Arthur Street, public workshop or something or about homeless services in Khatati. So that, because it's a hot, like on Nextdoor, it was the about hundreds of things about the Arthur Street. So I think that would be really good. I'd like to get weed abatement on the, on the, on the agenda before it becomes an issue in May and June, and especially at this heat, you know? In February, it could cause some big problems this summer. And I guess that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else who would like to comment on non-action agenda items? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment. And then I'll bring it back. Item 16, was there any information that we received after the agenda? Okay, great. Thank you. And then item 17, we are going to move into closed session, closed session conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to paragraph four of subdivision D of section 549, 56.9, one case. And then after that, we will come back and report out of closed session. So thank you very much, and we will be back shortly.